Our next speaker, number 43, is Tompkins County legislator Carol Chalk.
Thank you. Carol Chalk, C-H-O-C-K. I'm on the Tompkins County Legislature where I chair a subcommittee for our Council of Governments, examining impacts on our tax assessment rolls and land values. We found that New York State allows drilling to occur only 100 feet from homes, and we learned from banks, appraisers, and attorneys that our ability to buy a home or get a home equity loan is threatened if lenders cannot meet basic standards to sell those loans to the secondary market. The lenders have been quite clear that they are not coming from an environmental perspective. Setting the minimum 200 or 300-foot setbacks they need will not provide an environmentally safe distance between industry and our homes. But the bankers made it clear that New York State must set a bigger distance between buildings and any kind of drilling activity for them to continue doing business. So our committee brought those bankers to El Albany seven months ago. They gave the same message to the DEC and to the governor's office. The answers are not in this new EIS. There are conflicts in the SGEIS, the proposed regulations, and even existing law with decades-old requirements of residential mortgage lending and secondary market standards established by Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, FHA, VA, and even New York State's own Sunny Mae Mortgage Agency. They didn't look. Subsurface or subsurface lease rights within 200 feet of a residential structure are not acceptable to Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac, Section 39.4 of the Freddie Mac Manual. FHA won't accept surface or subsurface leases within 300 feet of the home or even property boundary lines, Section 4150.2. Those setbacks can't just apply to the wellhead; they must apply to storage of chemicals, pipelines, and other ancillary activities. DEC ignored that, but the national press and even the New York State Bar Association have looked. FHFA, which now oversees Fannie and Freddie, has confirmed that it is the lender's responsibility. New York State must respond if we want our residents to own homes, finance, buy and sell, and take equity out when we need it. Those of you in the room here with leases, regardless of whether you are pro or anti-drilling for other reasons, it is important to go home and check out your leases. A 200-foot clause in your lease is not good enough unless it has those other stipulations. There's a lot of misinformation about that out there. Check with your bank. You may be in violation of your mortgage. Know that when you go to buy, sell, or get a loan, you will each need to renegotiate the terms unless New York State sets those parameters across the board at the state level. The fact that New York State was so clearly unaware and then chose to ignore the specific needs of this competing industry, an essential industry, undermines our confidence that New York State has done its due diligence to protect even the basic homeownership rights of New Yorkers and the needs of our existing businesses. Let's help them stay in business. This industry looks to transfer costs and risks to other industries, particularly the real estate industry, the taxpayers at local and state levels, and to the homeowners of New York State. Do not let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, number 44, is Tompkins County legislator Pam Mackesy.
That's Pam, P-A-M, Mackesy, M-A-C-K-E-S-E-Y. So here we are at yet another hearing about the proposed DSGEIS. Yet even after innumerable hearings and discussions, major gaps and woeful inadequacies remain. For example, inadequate groundwater monitoring, mitigation measures that are suggested but not required, inadequate regulation of fracking fluids that contain carcinogens, mutagens, and endocrine disruptors, inadequate methods of disposal of flowback water and fracking fluids. The document still does not address in any meaningful way the cumulative impacts of hydro fracking, and the list goes on. Article 14, Section 4 of the New York State Constitution reads, "The policy of the state shall be to conserve and protect its natural resources and scenic beauty and encourage the development and improvement of its agricultural lands for the production of food and other agricultural products. The legislature in implementing this policy shall include adequate provision for the abatement of air and water pollution and of excessive and unnecessary noise, the protection of agricultural land, wetlands, and shorelands, and the development and regulation of water resources." If it implements the DSGEIS, our state government will be violating its responsibility to protect its citizens and its environment. In fact, I believe that our natural resources, scenic beauty, and agricultural lands will all be compromised if it is put into effect. In addition, air and water pollution will inevitably increase as it has in every other state where hydro fracking is allowed. The states are very high for New York State residents. Our economic, social, environmental future are jeopardized if we allow hydro fracking to move forward. Destroying the fabric of our communities and farms by allowing our aquifers, lakes, and streams to be sucked dry are a real threat for all New York State residents. However, the stakes are also high for those in Albany who have ambition. I hope our Albany leaders are not so enamored by the river of money from the oil and gas industry flowing in their direction that they fail to see the armies of people who have stood up and will continue to stand up to speak out against the travesty we will encounter if this SGEIS is implemented. DEC has been working on this document for three years, and it would still huge gaps and omissions remain. My comment to DEC and to our elected Albany leaders is, thank you for your hard work, but I believe it is time to throw the document into the recycling bin. The truth is that horizontal hydro fracking is unsafe and should be banned. It's unsafe for New York City; it's unsafe for Skinny Atlas Lake; it's unsafe for Tompkins County, Schuman County, Yates County, Skyler County, Stubein County, and every county in New York State.
Thank you. Our next speaker, number 45, Arthur Hunt.
My name is Arthur Hunt, A-R-T-H-U-R-H-U-N-T. Our family owns Hunt Country Vineyards in Branchport, New York on Cuca Lake. We and our neighbors' wineries produce world-class wines because of the unique, pristine, cool climate of the Finger Lakes. We live on land that has been in the family for seven generations. We are one of the larger private employers in our area with over 30 employees. I believe I speak for the majority of the wineries in the Finger Lakes. Agriculture and tourism drawn by the wineries and the lakes is the economic engine of the Finger Lakes economy. The wine and grape industry alone has an economic impact to the state of over $3.76 billion. There was no thorough, unbiased economic study done by the DEC on the effects of high-volume hydro fracking on local businesses in the Finger Lakes. As soon as the fracking trucks start rolling, roads will deteriorate; tourism will be drastically reduced; wineries that all depend on tourism will soon be out of business. Many other businesses in the area are also heavily dependent on visitors; they will likely be bankrupt as well. Hundreds of sustainable businesses and thousands of local jobs will be permanently lost, permanently lost because property values will plummet due to the industrialization and pollution of our farms, pollution of our air, pollution of our soil, and likely our precious water. The gas industry says it will create jobs. These are only temporary; most are filled by out-of-state workers. When they move on, history shows local economies are devastated. As a seventh-generation family farm, we take the long view and consider ourselves stewards of the land. Most of the produce and grain grown in America is grown out west. The western U.S. is running out of water. Experts agree that within a generation, most of that food will have to be grown somewhere else. Since the Finger Lakes region has some of the cleanest air, abundant clean water, and fertile soil, it will once again become the vital breadbasket for the Northeast. We can't afford to lose another acre of our precious farmland to any kind of development. Allowing high-volume hydro fracking in the Finger Lakes may likely prove to be one of the biggest economic and environmental disasters ever made in the history of the state of New York. This will likely bankrupt not only the Finger Lakes but possibly the whole state economy. How will that go over, Governor? Why not instead promote sustainable local jobs? People can live without gas; they cannot live without clean water, clean air, and safe food. As currently written, your SGEIS will not safeguard our futures. You are the Department of Environmental Conservation. What happened to your moral responsibility to the environment? What are you thinking?
Thank you. Our next speaker is number 46, Mike Morris.
Hi there, Mike Morris, M-I-K-E-M-O-R-R-I-S, like the cat. I apologize for the disjointed nature of this. I just wrote this down. I wasn't planning on coming tonight. I wanted to spend the time with my kids, but here we are again. Coming because, decided to come because I live in the village of Groton, and villages like Groton, where the town stands no chance, at least at present, of passing a ban. The towns are going to just be overrun; the villages are going to be overrun. Literally, in the village of Groton, there are people that have leased in the village boundaries, like 1%. Literally, 99% of us are going to suffer the consequences of this if it happens. The draft SGEIS is sort of on its face, if you just look at it, the positives, negatives, even if you took it at face value, it's a loss for all of us. Our whole communities will be ruined and destroyed, and that's if we take all of their assumptions and everything at face value and say that that's true. So, you know, this is, we're starting out in the hole with this, even by their own language. And so if it does pass, little municipalities like Groton need time to gear up and get ready for this because right now they're not ready. And we have a municipal water supply, and I'd like to see the rules strengthened for that. Let's see. Just by their own numbers and the recent news, what they're claiming we're going to see in revenues won't even cover the cost of DEC regulation. So even if the gas companies repair the roads, what next? What are we going to see out of this? I mean, are we going to see any municipal centers, new public buildings, new schools, anything? No, we're just going to see, we're going to see nothing. So here's what, I hate the term "Marcellus play" because it's as though it's a gamble; it's gambling, that it's a game, and it's not. This is real for us. And the gas companies, they came in, excuse me, getting out of breath. They signed their leases ahead of time. They didn't have permits; they didn't have regulations. We owe them nothing. They gambled; they lose. We don't owe them a thing. We need to protect our communities. And, you know, the "Drill Baby Drill" is a great slogan for the carpenters' union, but it should not be the slogan for the DEC.
Thank you. Our next speaker, number 47, Jonas Perrier. And before you begin, speakers number 49 through 56 can come up to the front.
Hello. My name is Jonas Perrier. I'm from Truittburg, New York. I am 11 years old, and I've been having a hard time understanding the SGEIS. And tonight, I see that I'm not alone. When I'm your age, I hope I don't have to drive to New York City to get a clean glass of water. When I have kids, I hope my kids have a clean future. Why should we let outsiders come to New York and sell our gas to China? The gas is in the ground and has been for millions of years. We can't afford to wait until there is a proven, safe way to get it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, number 48, Chris Tate. Oh, 48? Last chance?
I'm right here.
Okay. Oh, you're right there.
All right. Thanks a lot for doing this. I'd like to thank Lawrence McCann for and the Tompkins County Council of Governments for doing this. And really, what I'd just like to say is there needs to be a comprehensive health risk assessment associated with vertical and horizontal hydro fracking included in the SGEIS, and I think it's criminally negligent to exclude that, and I think you're exposed, the DEC is exposed on this, and you better cover your asses and do one. And with that, I'd like to introduce, I'd like to cede the rest of my time to Linda Levine, one of the newly-elected Towns Board members of Dryden, one of the heroes of our movement. Let's get behind the towns.
Hi. I am proud to be future representing Dryden, and everyone has already said all the important things, but I want to add that what I'm about to say, although it's a little bit on the funny side, is about the fact that we really need to respect the science in this. So Cornell's motto is, "I would build, found an institution where anyone can find study in any subject." And the classic '60s joke about this was, "Esra, you can't really mean that. Where would you put all those people?" And the answer was, "Not to worry; wait till you see where I put it." Nobody got that joke. It's okay. The new joke going around also speaks to our Cow Country location. That is, the gas industry must have mistakenly thought that if they wrote off the New York City watershed, upstate New York would be easy prey because we're just a bunch of hicks in the middle of nowhere with no political or intellectual clout. Well, the joke is on them. Someone should have warned them that all these hicks around these parts are informed citizens who will fight with real science and fierce determination. By the way, we should not be surprised that they don't know who we are because they're not from around here, are they? They're from Mumbai and Beijing and maybe as close as Texas. So tonight, we want to introduce ourselves. Don't waste your time around here. Wonderful people like Senator Richard Gottfried learned to think critically at Cornell and spoke powerfully at the DEC hearings in New York City yesterday. Local internationally-known scientists like Tony Ingraffia and Bob Haworth do necessary research exposing industry lies, and we know that the science is not ready. We thank Governor Cuomo and Governor Markell in the recent DRBC decision. They acknowledge that the science is not ready and the risk's much too great. On a final note, I want to hand in evidence of fraud published in PNAS by the industry in which two scientists were paid by the industry to say they had no conflict. They signed that statement with the facts of Osborne's Duke methane study. In fact, they lied. They are paid by the industry. I will sit.
Thank you. And just to keep things clear, to help with the flow of things, odd numbers, speakers should speak on this side, and even numbers on this side. Our next speaker is number 49, David Kalb.
After sitting and listening to a lot of the comments tonight, I have less and less confidence in the DEC. But I did find today, in a very short time, a couple of flaws that I found very easily when I actually read part of the SGEIS.
Can you speak closer to the mic, David?
The current DEC regulations require, this is a quote from the SGEIS, "evaluate the use of alternative additives that pose less potential risk to water resources." So this is the DEC suggesting that the gas companies look for alternatives that are less toxic. Now, if they can't even answer an email, how are they going to put any teeth behind a comment like this? Nowhere in the document are there any parameters for what that evaluation should entail. Without specific standards, we know that all we owe get from the gas companies is, "Oh, we tried that; it didn't work." We demand safety of our irreplaceable water resources. It is much more cost-effective to impose strict standards now rather than attempt to clean up contamination later, if that were even possible. For example, the use of benzene and other petroleum distillates in drilling fluids should be disallowed since many drilling companies phased out their use in the 1990s. I ask the DEC ban the use of known or suspected toxic agents, cancer-causing agents, teratogens, mutagens, and endocrine disruptors from all gas drilling procedures. If they can't do it without these dangerous chemicals, let them figure it out or go somewhere else, but no drilling in New York until they do. The shale deposits have been here for hundreds of thousands of years; they're not going away. There's no rush. Contamination can also come from flowback in produced waters, both of which would be considered hazardous waste were it not for the Halliburton loophole. Call it what it is and force the gas companies to deal with it for what it is, hazardous waste. Even if the gas companies did not add any toxic chemicals, the byproducts of their industrial process is hazardous waste. No municipal wastewater treatment facility can deal with elevated levels of radium or other radioisotopes and extremely high concentrations of salt. No private treatment plants exist in New York State that can deal with this waste either. The process of pre-treating the liquid waste to concentrate it in solid form only moves the hazard from a liquid form to a solid form, and there is nothing in the DEC's SGEIS to address this issue at all. Federal Department of Energy Research found that radiation levels higher than 50 picocuries per gram could lead to increased health risks. Estimates by the Water Resource Institute of New York at Cornell have estimated, based on the DEC's own data, of up to 5,000 picocuries of radiation per liter of water from Marcellus shale flowback that could result in solid waste at least 500, five times, excuse me, 500 picocuries, which is 10 times the DEOEs level in their study.
Thank you.
There needs to be a moratorium on hydraulic fracturing in New York State.
Thank you. Our next speaker, number 50, Barbara Kane Lewis.
That's B-A-R, B-A-R-A, K-A-N-E-L-E-W-I-S. I live in the town of Barker in New York State. It's on the very edge of Broome County, about 35 miles southeast of Ithaca. I have many concerns about hydro-fractured drilling for natural gas in New York State. The SGEIS does not provide enough protection for the citizens of New York and our watersheds. The rules are unclear about fracking in floodplains. Much of New York is very vulnerable to serious flooding. Fracking here could lead to contamination, not just of groundwater, but in areas of runoff and standing water as well. There are inadequate assessments of the potential effects of fracking on our health. Work done by the Endocrine Disruption Exchange has determined that serious health problems occur in areas of drilling. We need to protect the health of all New Yorkers. We need to be prepared and to plan on how to protect our citizens instead of learning how to treat serious health problems after they occur. Our children deserve this. No comprehensive assessment has been done of the cumulative impacts of major industrial development on rural areas. No provision has been made for assistance to those communities to keep roads safe, to help with increased emergency response, and the possible need for additional living facilities. Many areas already hard-hit by flooding are in a housing crisis, which could be worsened by an influx of workers needing places to live. No adequate plans have been developed for the transport and treatment of dangerous fracking waste. These facilities should be in place and ready for operation before any drilling takes place, not after. All New Yorkers deserve safe drinking water. Although major watersheds receive some protection, hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers have private wells and are not geographically close enough to use any water treatment facilities. If their water is contaminated, they will have no safe water. This issue must be addressed by the SGEIS. It is not reasonable to expose the Southern Tier and the Finger Lakes to the dangers of drilling when it has been ruled unsafe for other areas. We all deserve the protection of safe water, breathable air, and the right to personal safety. We should not sacrifice these for an influx of money that is not even certain. Money cannot fix ruined water or ruined health. It is not fair to ask rural New Yorkers to pay that cost in order for large energy corporations to reap profit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, number 51, Julia Walsh.
Hello, everybody. I'm the campaign director for Frac Action, and thank you, Ithaca, for hosting this hearing. It's because of all the work that you've done here that we've been able to hold off this industry for the past three years. And I come bearing some good news. We have won these hearings. We've outnumbered the gas industry in Dansville, in Binghamton, in Locksheldrick, in New York City, and large numbers. There have been thousands and thousands of people that have come out across the state, everyday New Yorkers, and for the millions of dollars, for the pleading emails of landowners' coalitions and groups begging the thousands of people to come out to support the fracking industry opening up in New York, they've only managed to get a couple hundred people and many of the same faces in every single region. We've heard that after Binghamton, the Elmira Airport was very much alive with many people flying out from wherever they came from to come and show their faces in New York as if they are New Yorkers. It's very important right now, as you've heard and as many people have said over the course of these hearings, there are thousands of reasons why this document is insufficient. It's important to note that this is not a scientific document; this is a political document that will be used to justify a rush to drill in this state. We need to make sure that we keep our energy and spirit alive here in order to stop this from moving forward. As many people have already said, there's no public health impact study; there's no cumulative environmental impact study; there's no real socioeconomic impact study. In fact, at the DEC Hydrofracking Advisory Panel meeting, when environmental advocates' executive director, Rob Moore, asked ENE, the consultants that put together the socioeconomic study, "Where are the costs to New Yorkers?", they said, "The DEC did not hire us to look at the costs; they only hired us to look at the benefits to this state." This is an outrage. Right now, the AP has reported, and it's been in several newspapers, that Senator Libas is lobbying our governor and creating a strong alliance with Governor Cuomo and the DEC to ask them to move forward in opening up the Southern Tier, Broome, Shenango, and Tioga Counties up this spring for fracking. It is so critical right now that all of you here in Ithaca and across the state that we realize that opening up the Southern Tier means opening up our entire state. The people in the Southern Tier are outraged; they are upset, and some of them are very much literally terrified at the thought of this stopping, and it will be up to all of us to work together as a statewide movement to make it very clear to our government, Governor, that this is a politically unacceptable move and that we will not allow fracking in New York and that we will prevail and be the first state to ban fracking in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, number 52, Becca Harber.
Hi. It's B-E-C-C-A-H-A-R-B-E-R, and I'm a pretty wilted, tired speaker right now. I live in the Newfield area. I've lived in this county for about 30 years, and I'm mostly commenting on what is not in the SGEIS. But first, I want to say I heard some people speak about gas drilling on WSKG this week, and one person pointed out that he didn't know about this version, but he said the first version of this document was co-authored by the lawyer who works for Ann Schuch, who is now suing the town of Dryden, that he was one of the co-authors of the first version of this document, and that all of the information, the numbers, the information about gas drilling is just completely gas industry-sourced information. So, you know, that's one of the huge flaws of this document, and I think it needs to be rejected for all the reasons everybody has been mentioning so far. I want to say that my own view of an environmental impact statement is that it can't really have much chance of accurately evaluating the environmental impacts without very specific locations for whatever it is that's being proposed, specific conditions, specific factors regarding site, and area-specific conditions and existences of water, weather, soil, topography, air currents and directional flow, who lives there, human and non-human, what grows there, and the current and upcoming threats and impacts from other sources, like climate change trends. change trends and invasive species, to mention just some. The approach of a generic SGEIS is absurd, in my opinion. So, I do not find my home or neighborhood included in this statement. And I think even if all these things were done, okay, one minute. Where I live is in a valley with a road through it, going down to a stream valley with steep hills rising up, and there's hundreds of acres above at the top of each of the sides of those that have been leased. And even if we had 2,000 feet, I do not believe that the setbacks for the Syracuse and New York City watersheds are sufficient, I think that is la-la land right there, and that if you have contaminated water uphill, even thousands of feet, it's going to come down and get those streams, get those wells. We live off of wells and springs in our road. So, the whole thing is just a bunch of you-know-what, and it just, it's totally unsafe. Do I have any more? 15 seconds, okay. Well, anyway, and, you know, I'm not in that statement, like, I won't be able to sleep with the trucks going 24/7 for probably over a year, lots of things like that, thank you.
Thank you.